To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion.
Morning.
Morning. Seeing no public discussion, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three? Motion by Jack, second by?
I'll second.
Lecter? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Give you a chance to sit down and.
They got construction going on one sixty-nine.
Yeah, I was on it this morning. The, uh, did you look at the claims in your folder?
Yeah.
Sure.
Do you wanna look at them or we're gonna pass them back down so that way?
That's fine.
Jack and Sam first, all.
Two places. Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
You are aided the agenda.
Yes.
It wasn't too tough.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm just getting set up here.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
I'll, I'll approve the claims.
Carter? Second?
I'll second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion? Let's see, we got three new towels for the sheriff.
I was, I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, those been ordered for a while.
Yeah, so they finally came.
About time.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Pose. Motion carried unanimous. Sign and pass them down. That is part of this one.
No one signed this one.
Send it back down, if you're signing.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, is it on the back?
Yeah. It's on the back.
Uh, there's probably another one underneath of that one, that was just a range.
No. It's, you can take it down there for. Disapprove over here on the bottom. Oh, he's got one under there too.
Yep.
We'll go the opposite direction.
Yeah, we'll go hand over.
But is that approved or?
That's approved.
Oh, that's a disapproval.
Josh. I want this for you yet.
They handed you without signing.
Yeah, you did.
We'll get it all here eventually.
You just toss them around until we get enough.
And just keep passing them around. Soon as later we'll get them all signed.
Jack, did you vote no on this or you signed or decided?
I thought I signed the right side.
No. They're tricky, they move the hays and then the hays around.
This is. Disapprove. I didn't think you voted no, but I didn't, didn't know if that was missing, so. Okay, that's everyone.
That's everyone. Except Kami.
Hmm, I don't have to sign this one.
Oh, what did I do?
Thanks.
It's on the back page.
You don't get out, you get to sign that one.
That's under there. Almost done here. It's almost as if I wasn't the last one to walk in.
So we're not?
I think we got them all.
We are up to. Years of service award. Adam Miller, fifteen years? He's, looks way too young to be in fifteen.
Yeah.
You sure that's right, Adam?
That's right.
Hey, congratulations, Adam. Hold your paper up a little higher and go. He always. I what?
He always boxing you around.
Alright, one, two, three.
You're inspecting.
Thanks, Adam.
We are up to fireworks for Bait of Iowa. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the fireworks for Bait? I would do that. Do I have a second? Second by Plath. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried unanimous. Discussion decision approved cigarette permit for rolling cigars of Heartland LLC. Brittany has all the paperwork done?
Yep, and he'll be signing two of them, one that finishes this year, and then one for next year.
It's gonna have a trailer?
Yeah.
Set up someplace like they've been, all these food trailers come around.
Yep, only it's a, it's about true.
He's out of council blocks. Would someone like to make the motion to approve the cigarette permit for rolling cigars of Heartland LLC? Motion by Plath, do I have a second?
I'll second. Let me take Josh's.
Josh? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried unanimous.
You can go grab some water while you're signing.
Yep. Anybody have any questions on the transfers? Everybody had a chance to look at them? If there are no questions on the transfers, let the record show that we acknowledge the transfers made by the auditor. We are up to discussion decision on timesheet software. Derek's coming in?
Oh, it's actually called.
Yep.
So, um, coming out of the department head meeting last week and, um, actually went back about a year, maybe a year and a half, I don't know, uh, it's been a while. We've had to talk about doing electronic timesheets. A couple of departments already use them for tracking, um, those. It's a easy web-based system, there's an annual fee to doing it, um, the attorney's office uses it, Doug's office here in the building uses it, um, our department use it for tracking time. The setup fee from solutions, which is our main county software, is somewhere about six thousand, between four and six thousand dollars to get that portion set up. And then our annual fee to have all the employees, um, up and running is about sixty-five hundred to seven thousand a year. And that's for a hundred and five full-time employees and forty-seven part-time employees.
Derek, what do we pay now for the ones that have it now?
Uh, twelve hundred is what we're paying right now, so.
So that'll be on top of the twelve hundred?
Uh, no, that would place.
Yeah, so you're looking.
Correct.
You're looking at.
We haven't had full, uh, department head support, some department heads want it, some don't. Um, I know Doug, um, has some challenges with his folks out in the field, um, using it, um, and being able to do that successfully could be a problem, both for IT and for his staff, so. Um, I think we excluded them in our discussions.
But that employee count would have. Set, that would include secondary road.
Correct, yes, if you just, if you decided to include them.
Right.
So that a hundred and five employees is the wrong number?
Well, if, if more decided to include this department in that, yes, it would be.
Think it'd be kinda hard because they don't have internet connection at the shops, so.
And some guys have smart phones, some don't.
Yep.
Even the application, the phone application is not reliable yet.
When we talked about it at the department head, I think we agreed that we would start the, if we, if you guys decided to start it, we would start it without secondary road and, and possibly integrate them later if they decided to.
So sixty-five hundred would be a wrong number?
It would be less than that, and, you know, the, the question is, is there value there? And, uh, what I'm looking to do is just knock it off my list, so if either the department heads want it, they don't want it, um, I don't care either way what we decide to do, but I don't wanna keep getting prices and updates, so. Uh, it's up to you guys, what you wanna do, this is not my decision, so.
So what do they have to, they have to like clock in on their computers?
Yeah, they can either do it on their computer or on their phone, either way. Um, we have, we talked about two different methods, the first method would be, um, yes, an actual punch-in, punch-out on their computer, that would be one option. Some departments, Todd's department, my department, that's how we handle it, I think Doug's office does it the same way. Um, the other discussion was doing it the same way that we do our spreadsheets now, where, um, instead of having a spreadsheet, someone writing it out on that spreadsheet, they would go to the webpage and put in. I clocked in at eight AM, I clocked out at four PM on Monday, I clocked in at eight AM, four PM on Tuesday. Uh, and then the auditor's office would be able to view that on the webpage instead of getting a, a hard copy of some, um, that's, that's what we got going on there, so.
They have to actually do that on a computer here, they can do it from a, like, from home or?
Um, they can do it from home unless we force it to be in one of the buildings, but by default, it could be any computer, and that's cell phone too. Yeah, and we could, we could lock it down, so, um, it grabbed the GPS location of the phone, so if they were in Mexico and they logged in, we would know they were in Mexico, kind of deal. I find that would be appropriate. To log in from Mexico? Probably not.
No, no.
Yes. Or. Yeah. Being that your department and a couple of departments are already using that software, um, as far as that cost is figured, are they already figuring that? I mean, they would already be part of that program, right, or don't?
Are you, like, say your department is already paying for?
Yeah, so that sixty-five hundred or? Yeah, so this sixty-five hundred to seven thousand, you would take twelve hundred off of that to get the total, and if government lords, um, departments were not included, it would be less than that as well, yes.
That's the only question, I mean. Most of it was about talking about the hours, I mean, realistically, most of them are. Yeah, it's kind of how it did not look, pay hourly, it's really salary. So, I mean, how many, there's a, there's a handful of people, do you have one that's on?
Well, I have two, yeah.
It's about two that are paid hourly.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess that's the only question, it's really worth it when you think about.
Most costs.
Most would pay on the salary anyway.
Well, the deputies are still paid on hourly, based, based on an hourly salary. So they still should work the hours. I mean, they can not, not come in and work just because you're a deputy. So in my mind, you're still an hourly employee, you must.
And I think that would be kinda similar with the EMS as well. Yeah, it would be the same.
So this would include EMS?
Uh, that sixty-five hundred does not include EMS. Because we got these numbers before EMS was coming aboard, so.
So, and Phil, did you plan on using this for EMS?
We have to have some kind of system to track their hours.
Yeah.
So if, if secondary roads doesn't be part of it, then EMS coming in would maybe fill in some of those.
A few.
Those numbers, yeah.
Is it? Cost-effective? Are we saving money somewhere doing this? Other than doing time sheets?
I don't know that we're saving money, it, it automates, the system brings us into this century instead of filling out timesheets, you know, paper timesheets. The, the yearly concern is, is a concern of mine, I didn't realize we would be paying such a large amount per, per year. So it, it is, that is a concern of mine also, so.
Are, are the physical timesheets not, it's not working or?
They are, it's just.
Or why, why is it?
It, it's just that. We have to wait for them to come in, which, you know, could be the same thing if it was automated too, is, you know, we're waiting for everybody to get the timesheets in, that happens every month, but. You'd probably have the same situation if it was automated too.
Melissa.
I don't know if there's any, I, I mean, Melissa does the timesheets and she has to input all of that. For every employee that gives a timesheet. And so if it were automated, that would free her up for other things, I guess there's your savings, I don't know if you can put a cost to that, but that would be the same. And, and, you know, to, uh, to Mr. Plath's point, uh, yeah, I mean, it, it, that's kind of a, an odd thing, but we report the time anyway, you know, so we make sure that each one of the employees, even though they've been paid a. Salary, you know, they still have to report their hours, so it's a way to keep track of everyone, um, you know, without having them to fill out those paper timesheets, so. You know, I think, to me, when I was talking about it, uh, in the, uh, department head meetings, uh, I think that's, that's where your savings is gonna come, you know, freeze her up or something else. Uh, I think there's still gonna be some oversight, but not as much.
How much time would you estimate that would save Melissa?
A lot of our employees are salary, so what she's inputting is gonna be, you know, vacations, sick leave, that kinda stuff, so I, I would have to ask her.
So Derek, on this, on this invoice, it's got annual total of sixty-five, seventy, ninety-six, then it's got order total of forty-five, fifty-four, sixty-seven. So is that a government discount for price or what?
The sixty-five hundred?
Which, which number are we actually?
The forty-five fifty-four, what's that number?
It says annual total, order subtotal.
Yeah.
And then grand total and.
Where are you seeing that?
In that forward column.
Yeah, just. Which number are we actually?
Um, that is not what I'm working on, oh, so that's pro-rated, so that was because we're at the middle of our contract, so the actual annual total would be the sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
And again, that number is old, that one's probably stale, so it'll probably look at seven thousand-ish, um, is what my guess would be.
Oh, so this was, okay, would, start date would have been back in? Nine twenty-eight?
Yeah, we started talking about this about a year ago.
Yeah, go bigger, I mean, cause I'm, how come we're using this from Texas, is, you can't use anything from solutions or something that we already have?
This is just the webpage and then the cell phone application, and then this dumps into solutions, so.
It does.
Solutions has to write a, an interface for it, that's the four and six thousand to get started, and then once that's done, then this will come over to solutions. Is what it wants to.
So it does merge?
Correct.
Is there any other platforms that would do the same thing?
There's another platform called RT Vision, it's a little more expensive than this, I think it was another fifteen hundred or two thousand more than time clock and loss cost. But again, it's, it's not an IT decision, right, this is up to the department heads on what they wanna do and what they think is necessary for their staff, so.
What do you think, Nick?
I, I mean, it's been something that we've been talking about for a while, um. And I don't know if, uh, many of the employees know much about it at this time, I mean, I think sometimes. There's not a lot of information shared, you know, with the employees also, so. They might wanna know, know a little more about it.
Melissa, you're gonna do this. What's your opinion?
I, I don't know. I don't know enough about it to know.
Right now, you're doing it all off of paper. Time sheets.
But I don't enter time for hourly employee, I only enter it for nineteen people. I only have nineteen hourly people.
So if, if we?
The rest are salary and I don't put any time in for them.
You don't?
No.
So if we got this, do you have any idea how much time that would save you or any? Ballpark, general idea? A lot, not a lot?
Not a lot.
For nineteen people?
The jailers.
Well, that's.
The jailers are all, there's twelve of them or so, they're all hourly, and I can do their payroll in an hour, so, and they're the ones I enter the time for, so.
And we would, we would have EMS coming on, which would change that count, but.
I lay out more staff, I. I don't, it's not so sorry, but that's just my opinion. Either way, I'm, I'm not against it, but, uh, kinda like Nick, you know, maybe. Share some of the ideas with the employees as well or more about it, but once we know more, um, if it's a time saver, then, you know, whatever the majority of the departments would wanna do. Either way, it doesn't really affect me, I'm a full employee, so, you know, what we're doing now is working as well, just, so, anyway.
Have you ever done a demo with this? Yeah, we did several demos, I don't know how we would make it work. Um, like I said, some departments want to allow their employees full edit access, so they would go in and manually put the four, eight, four, eight, four. And then some departments want to clock in, clock out, clock in, clock out, um, there's no consistency across the departments on that. Um, and I think we did a vision, or a demo on RT Vision as well, um, so we did a couple of demos about a year ago on, on different options.
So if you. Approved this, would you have them all be consistent? On your application then? Our use of it?
I can't answer that, I'm just side to department.
Well, it's just a question that we should know.
I guess my opinion was, would be, there should be consistency if, if you do that to some degree, um, but I didn't.
We can set up, sorry.
I didn't realize we already had some using it and some not and all that, um.
We can set up by department as well, if you guys choose to have it that way, so we could, uh, accommodate each department and what they wanna do with their departments, um, so.
And that might be a better option if we only do it for the people that actually are hourly, I mean. I don't, I guess, I don't need it, my paycheck doesn't depend on how everyone else's salary would be the same thing, so I don't know why we would pay forty bucks a, or forty-three bucks a year for every salaried person. Can we break it out that way?
Can I, or can I make a motion to? To not move forward with timesheets off of it?
You can.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
What's the motion?
I did not.
But I guess it's all, some, some of you are using, how, how do I word that emotion?
Well, you got a motion, let's, let's get a second on it now, so we can have discussion. Do I have a second on Josh's motion? Oh, Carter, I'm sorry.
I, is that how you actually want your motion though? With your question at the end?
Do you wanna say not move forward with additional timesheet stuff then?
Maybe that, that's what it would have been better wording.
Okay.
That's what I would get, get.
Okay, so your motion would stand that you do not wanna go? Any further than what we're using.
I don't wanna take any away from the departments that are using this.
Not go any further with the software.
At, at the moment, yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Josh? Discussion. Now that we have a motion, let's discuss, the motion is not going forward.
There's some hourly employees in that you're not, that are. Using the time, that, how many, how many more?
I have nineteen hourly employees that I enter time for.
But not all nineteen are currently on the time.
Not on the time clock.
So.
Could that be beneficial if they all were?
I don't know how much time it would save. I, I don't know anything about the system or anything to know.
Well, the nineteen, how many are, are on it now?
None.
So, in your motion, Josh?
Carter.
Or Carter, I mean, if the jail would like to go to this system, would you be against it?
If they wanted to, that's, that's fine.
So all we're doing, all your motion is saying that you do not make, wanna make it mandatory?
Right.
Well, that's, that's not how I take the motion.
Yes, I.
Yes.
Todd's got a question, yeah.
I need your motion, so I don't have, I could discuss it, but I just wanted to, so, so it's clear. My office uses the, the time clock software, okay, but we still do the hourly paper every month. It doesn't automatically report, so, you know, I guess, first thing I'd like to, to find out, if I could, is why do we do those hourly forms?
Yeah.
Well, well, why do we fill those out, and I mean, if, if we're not going to worry about keeping track of time, then why do we fill those out? We've been doing that for twenty-four years, as far as I've been, twenty-nine, I mean, you do that every month, that's the, that's the tedious thing. I don't know what Judy does, I mean, how she keeps and goes through that, but, but, you know, so, that's, that's kind of, every month, regardless of the person is an hourly employee or a salary employee, we check day eight, day eight, day eight. So for, you know, those types of things, is what, the reason I went to time clocks, or the, the, the software, was so I could keep track of that time. Otherwise, you're filling out calendars, or, I don't know what you do in your office, keep track of your employees' time, uh, do you?
Right, I have a calendar.
So you write on the calendar each month, so-and-so's here, so-and-so's here. I mean, it, it's a way to reduce the, the tediousness of that. That's, that's why I went to it, because then I can just go on the computer and I can say, okay, here, 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 because they clock in, clock out. So, but yeah, we still do those each month, fifteenth of each month, we have to have those time sheets in. But the way it sounds, I mean, if they're salaried, why do we even worry about those hours? I know why I do, because I wanna make sure that they're there working, so that we can tell what's vacation and what's, uh, what's, uh, sickly, alright? Or other types of beneficially, so, yeah, I don't know, I, I mean, I agree, it's probably not much of a cost savings. It's just, you know, reducing that tediousness of the, of the day, and that's, uh, the once a month, I guess. So, uh, I just didn't wanna go to that old, sorry, the old-fashioned calendar and mark down the timing sheet, not, not, not implying anything, Judy, but it's just, to me, trying to make it more efficient. So then what that would do is, instead of, you know, those paper time sheets each month, that each department has to fill out to make sure, you know, Johnny was here and Jill was here and, okay, make sure all of that, it's right in the software and gets dumped right to, we check it once a month on the software because the time is there, because it's recorded, and, and that's what you reduce. And, and, you know, is it gonna hurt my feelings if you know? I mean, I, I understand, it's a lot, sixty-five hundred a month, our, our year, I, I didn't think it was gonna be that much, I don't even know why I paid it. Is there, zero? Okay, well, thank you. I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're looking at, and that's why I brought it up, and I think, I don't know what the other departments that use it, what they're reasoning for, it's just to reduce the, that, that, the tedium of doing that, Derek, but.
And that's.
But I still have to do it.
And that's what my thought process was to efficiency.
So I, okay, so, I only have nineteen people that I enter hours for, but like Todd said, we use those time sheets for sick and vacation, so.
Yeah.
I do enter that for all the salaries, so if that imported, imported automatically, that would save more.
As far as I know, I, I can't use it because it doesn't get reported in, but you can cover all, everything, sickly, bereavemently, uh, vacation. All of that, just boom, right into solutions for you.
I think when we did that demo, it showed us how that would work and it would automatically transfer.
So the department heads can look at their employees at any time they want to on this?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, there's another thing that I don't use, just because, I think it was a recent development, and I'm kinda slow to learn these computer things, but, um, you schedule it. And you know, if, if someone wants to take a vacation, they can see who's, maybe already got a vacation that day. Uh, so you gotta, uh, interdepartmental schedule that you can use, so, you know, it's, I think now in our office, what we do is, uh, you know, ask around, are you gonna be gone in, in minutes, uh, but, uh, there's a lot of things that even I don't know that it's capable of doing, but. Looking at it from the standpoint of just making it more efficient, you know, what's that word, I don't know.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, or are you ready to vote on the motion?
As long as it's clear, the motion that if a department wants to include that in their budget or whatever, in the future, or that's something they'd like to move towards, and not oppose that.
Can you change your motion?
I don't wanna amend your motion.
In the future, it's like it would be a charge to our departments.
Yes, right?
I would prefer if it was one bill, just set it's IT, so we're not trying to split it by department, it makes it much easier than trying to split it out.
So it would be out of your department budget?
Correct.
It would all come out of the IT DVD.
Okay, correct.
If everybody's, I wanna track thirty people every day. By paper.
Wouldn't wanna get elder.
Yeah, so this, are you, are you using just a department that could just give their phone out, clock in, clock out, get on the website, clock in, clock out? If all of your vacation and sick time came across automatically, would that help you reduce your time?
Yeah, that would save some.
Melissa, is it gonna be harder if some departments do it and some don't, or to know who does what or not?
They, would there be value in saying they were doing all of these the same?
Yeah.
Nope.
Well, it's, but just so you're not scaring your employees, it is the exact same thing as doing the paper copy, it's just on the computer, that's the only difference. Some department heads want their employees to clock in, clock out, which is fine, but for the departments that don't want, it would just be exactly replacing the spreadsheet. So, yes, they go on the spreadsheet, click, I was here eight hours, I was here eight hours, I was sick eight hours. So there's not a change for your employees, it's just electronic, and then the department head also has to click approve to authorize that that is correct before it goes over to solutions, so, um, you know, we're trying to make it as easy for the departments as we can, so. But it is a significant cost, so.
So Derek, if we do not move forward with anything right now, it would stay same effect as it's currently being used, like Todd has it, but it's not able to be imported, right?
Correct.
So.
Yeah, and I, that's what I wanted to solve, thanks, uh, for that, Mr. Stecker, because I can't import into what they're doing, that, that I think requires another.
And we, and we could spend that four to six thousand to do that interface for the employees that have it already, or the departments that have it already. But I wanna continue using it for my department, for, uh, clocking and clocking, so.
So I wanna make it clear that Carter's motion would limit Phil from using it for his new employees, that would be thirty employees or not?
Oh, it's eleven, both of them, and then we have, you know, twenty-ish volunteers.
So the volunteers would use the program too?
We'd have to look at the costs and see, um, you know, what the benefit is, but otherwise, I have to track them, they don't work every day, it is working as needed.
So you do want that you're behind getting the software then?
Yeah, because I don't wanna, at the end of the month, try to go back and record everything, I'd like to have the opportunity to look at how much of the month to, you know, through time cards and. And keep occurrence, and I want to draw those at the end of the month and spend the whole day doing it.
So Carter and Josh, let's clarify your motion before we vote on it.
What is it?
He wrote, not move forward with additional time sheets up to there.
Can I amend that motion?
Yes, you want to?
Okay. I, my intention was to not make it mandatory not to say no. Uh, but I believe as is, unless the departments wanna have it themselves, that's, that's what.
That's a whole different motion.
I know, I know, and it didn't get words right, so, so we can vote it down and make a new one, if, if you want, but.
I'd, I'd just as soon vote it down and make a new one.
I'll, I'll call for questions, so we vote on it and go from there.
We'll do a roll call vote in reverse order.
Jerks.
No.
Stecker.
No.
Wacter.
No.
Nas.
No.
Plas.
No.
Motion did not, motion failed.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to make it optional, uh, by department, um, if they want to add this.
Does that include the software to convert it over? Because that's, that's a key piece for forty-five hundred dollars. That's a one item, I believe.
Yes, there's two fees, number one is the interface between time clock plus and solutions. That is estimated to be between four and six thousand dollars, that is a one-time fee. The time clock plus annual license is gonna be about sixty-five, well, between six and seven thousand, depending on how many departments want to be included, and annual ongoing cost.
So it's gonna be two separate questions?
I'm sorry, interrupt your, go ahead.
It should be clarified what you're including.
Right, cause we don't wanna spend forty-five hundred dollars and then waste it.
Yeah.
Correct, correct, and then sixty-five hundred.
That's why I'm running, working around this, but.
Would, uh, be twelve hundred less, cause we're already paying for that twelve hundred dollars, right, so.
Right.
It wouldn't be as much of an increase, so.
But you'd have a forty-five hundred dollar fee plus a sixty, estimated six thousand dollars a year.
About, about a little over five thousand a year extra.
Yes, somewhere in the range, cutting out one department is what I do.
Well, could, could we table this and get an accurate count of how many employees are going to go onto this system? So we can get an actual number, instead of approving something and not knowing an actual number of what this is gonna cost for the employees. So this would include the, the jail staff and the EMS staff, um, so it sounds like those are the two that would probably go onto this system. So instead of having a hundred and fifty-two for the quantity, it would be significantly less, and we could get an accurate cost of it and, um, make a better decision there.
That's, that's a possibility, but you were in the middle of making a motion, so either withdraw that and.
I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw my original motion.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll make that motion to table this and for the department heads to get an accurate number, um, to Derek, so we can get it, get it more accurate, um.
I would, I would suggest a time, you wanna table, you want it for two weeks or something?
Let's do two weeks. Is that enough time, Derek?
Uh, yeah, that should be.
Okay.
And then, then more information could be shared with employees and stuff too.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'll second the motion, and then Melissa had her hand up.
So I have a question, so the, the system, like Todd, you have it already, so are you the only one that can see your employees?
Correct, it's locked down by department, so Karen would see her four, her three.
And, and nobody else can see her employees?
Well, there's one administrator in software, so that person would be able to see.
So, when you bring it back, separate out, we, the forty-five hundred dollars to get the software compatible with solutions, and then the, the other number
The end phase, yeah.
and the number of employees and what that's gonna cost, cause right now, we don't have those in front of us, but I'd like that separated out.
Yeah.
So that I'm, so that I'm clear when we discuss this, so if no other departments, just for the sake of this discussion, no other departments come on board, the cost to the county would be a one-time forty-five hundred dollar fee, so that those of us that are using it can dump it into solutions, that's it, no additional. Additional, extra additional, and we're gonna run off the stack.
Oh, correct.
That's, that's what I'm getting, but I'd like it clear.
Yeah.
We can get that.
And.
And I think that decision would be better made if we know, you know, we've got thirty more employees that are gonna be using this versus, you know, how many that we have on it right now, i- is it worth integrating that, or do we just save the money and just continue on with the system, you know, the way it is? Yeah.
Yeah, so there's two, there's one, one-time fee for solutions, and then there's a pain and recurring for time clock plus.
Wait two weeks?
Cause we already have, uh, fifteen users or so on that. That's the, there's no additional, so.
If, even, even if we did move forward, that there's gonna be some setup time, they're not gonna be able to build the platform that fast. Solutions won't be able to make an interface that fast, I don't think, so it's, it's gonna be what it's gonna be for the beginning.
Solutions has, can I said I already use it, so it's not gonna be that hard, but they're.
It would just be an ingredient into our system.
Okay.
So.
But it sounds like, uh, Phil already has a, a pretty good number of, of how many employees he's gonna have on the system, so.
Wow.
I think if we can get as close to that number, you know, as possible, then that way we can make the decision, you know, based on what the cost is for that.
I don't want Phil to have, start something, stop it, and then start a new program in one month, is where I'm coming from.
Right. Right.
So.
Yeah, we can move forward with Phil's now, if that's okay.
Yes, definitely, don't, don't start it, start, and then stop and then start something else, it makes no sense.
Okay, wait.
Well, you're still gonna have, you're still gonna do the hourly time sheets like all of us do when you have this program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can continue with the same format of time sheets they're using today, have less to worry with that, and, and not cause a big change to them if you don't wanna do it all at once, we could make something goodbye until we make the change, using the same kind of, kind of safe format they have today.
Okay, well, we don't wanna make their life miserable, Phil.
I mean, there, there's gonna have to be something for them to switch over, but.
Yeah.
I guess.
That transition.
We can, we can have a lot more conversation about this outside the board meeting too, so.
Yep.
I'd call for a question, so we vote on it.
Want to repeat the motion?
Yes, so the motion was by Wacter, second by Stecker, to table this discussion for two weeks for department heads to get an accurate count of employees that will be on the program and the cost.
Do a roll call vote.
Plas.
Yes.
Wacter, or I'm sorry, Nas.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Jerks.
No. Motion carried, forty-one. More to come. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Melissa.
Tammy, your name's on this next, um, discussion decision.
Yeah.
Fifth Amendment of child support staffing contract.
Yeah, I put the email in your packets along with the contract, the email came from Jenny Amundsen from our Department of Health and Human Services, um, asking for you guys to approve the contract through June thirty of twenty twenty-four.
Anybody have any questions on this? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by Carter. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. We need to sign something?
Yeah. I gotta find Casey's camera.
This is a payroll day. Next, we have change in payroll pay period, Tammy, you wanna lead the discussion on that?
So I've been talking about this for a while, um, I think this has been an ongoing discussion for years into how to fix our payroll system because the way it's set up is employees are being prepaid for ten to eleven days, depending on the, how many days are in the calendar month. So after we did the payroll survey, the payroll survey came back all over the place, some people wanted to switch our payroll to twice a month, some wanted to keep it as is. It was, there was no consensus at all, it was kind of all over the place, so, um, we kinda talked at department head meetings and a little bit here that, um, maybe the best would just be to fix the prepaid and not do any changes to avoid hardship to employees, so, um. This was one suggestion, um, would be to give employees three months' notice, so that they know they'd have a shorter time, shorter pay period um, in September, and it would mean that August, the month of August, they'd be paid, the month of August, like they normally are, from the first to the thirtieth. In September, they would be paid from the first through the fourteenth, and they'd be paid on the twentieth, so that would be the shorter. In September, they would be paid from the first through the fourteenth, and they'd be paid on the twentieth, so that would be the shorter pay period. Then in October, they'd be paid the twentieth, but it would be from what they fill their timesheets out for currently, which is the fifteenth through the fourteenth. So then we would eliminate prepaying and they would actually be being paid for what they fill out their timesheets for. I have been talking to our payroll attorney and Elizabeth, um, at Gardner and Company. And we've been having ongoing conversations how to, um, make this as easy for employees as we want to, we're hoping to have another discussion. So if you, if you, um, need more time to, you know, talk about it or talk to employees, I'm fine with, with tabling it, I have no, no problem with that.
Is there any feedback from department heads after you talked with your employees after the department head meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I talked to my employees and, and explained to them and things like that. I think one of the main concerns is they need more time. A lot of them, or some of them, you know, they're, they don't have enough money set aside. Because, you know, one month, they're just gonna get half the paycheck. And their concern is they just, they don't have enough set aside to cover their bills. So, um, the short discussion I had with, with, uh, one of my employees this morning. And, and, uh, I heard from one, but she said that there's more than, more than her that are concerned about that, I think they would like a little more time. They understand that getting out of the prepaid stuff and things like that, I believe, but they just need a little more time than three months.
Yeah, the same in mine, um, I think universally it was, uh, frowned upon because of the, the shortest time, three months. I mean, you know, when you look at it from the standpoint of, uh, bills needing to be paid, creditors want to be paid and, and three months. Uh, I think probably for quite a few in the courthouse is gonna be, uh, too short of a time to make that up. I think everybody understands what's, what's happening as far as why we, uh, why the county's looking at, uh, moving that. Because, you know, getting paid for the reported hours. Um, but, uh, you know, it's just not enough time to, to make up, uh, for those creditors that are gonna be coming on the twentieth of the month in September. Uh, the second thing is, I think that there was a consensus that, um, you know, why, why are we doing? I, I understand the reasoning, okay, from the fact that, okay, you're getting paid for the hours you report. But it's been going on for well over thirty years that way, why now? I think is what probably should be answered, uh, why is the push now? Cuz I know it's been this way since I've been here, Deb's been here the longest in my office and that's twenty-nine years and it's been this way all the time.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the, the reason.
Yeah, and I can answer that because, um, it's not efficient, it's not accurate. It's, you know, I mean, we're, we're not being paid for what we're turning in our hours for. And we're getting prepaid for, for ten days, when somebody retires, that creates quite a problem. And I, I think with record keeping purposes, audit purposes, I'm surprised that we've never had an issue. And to me, I have an issue with it.
Okay.
So.
And so, you know, I think in general, that's the, the feeling of, uh, you know, speaking on behalf of my, uh, employees. That, uh, I mean, there's just three months and not enough time, yeah.
I have an issue with getting half a paycheck. That's my issue.
And to abruptly, to abruptly change it for the employees, I think is really not a fair thing. I mean, I've been here twenty-three years and going to once a month was kind of an adjustment for me from my other job. But it's like that abrupt of a change for everybody that this is what we, this is what we rely on, these are our paychecks. And to abruptly change it is really hard. It's like, wow, like, how do I adjust that? So quickly and abruptly.
But how else are you gonna do it?
How, I don't know, that's why we're up here, we don't, we, we don't know.
Give more time, so how much time are we thinking that would be able to buy time?
I don't know.
Um, is it, uh. See, and that was the one thing that I was trying to figure out, I was supposed to be in trial today, so I've had a lot of time to think about this. But, um, is it a way that you could still maintain the, the full paycheck by moving it to the thirtieth, the last, the last day of the month? Changing hours reported, you're gonna get more of a paycheck than when that's converted?
I guess, Tammy, you can jump in here if I'm wrong on this, but I think, I think no matter how it gets moved.
I don't know.
There's going to be a short paycheck because we are prepaying.
Right.
And I, I don't, I don't know if there's any way to get around that, but I do agree, it's something that needs to be addressed, um.
So we got that prepaid way back when we started, twenty-nine years ago?
Yes. Yes, it's always been that way.
So we got a lot less paid twenty-nine years ago?
No, you would've got paid ahead.
No, we got more, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, it would've been a lower rate. So the, the question then comes down to, you know, what can we do? I mean, can we research it more to figure out a way that's not gonna be as impactful on the employees? I mean, my, my, my suggestion was if you move the pay date, which is not necessarily attractive to most, I know. But if you move it, then you're, you're getting more of, and not full, but you're getting more of a paycheck, which is a little easier to swallow, I don't know.
But if, if you move your pay date, you're, like, if, if you broke it down to your budget per day, so to speak. For income and expenses, you're still looking at that prepaid gap, no matter, that, that would be an issue no matter which way it gets moved, I guess. I don't, I mean, and we have talked about this for a while, but I don't know how else you could move it.
The payroll attorney's recommendation was to do, go to bi-weekly, um, bi-weekly paid periods. And then that would solve a lot of issues.
Then it wouldn't have, then you wouldn't have really any.
Right, and so, but when we did the survey, there's a lot of people that, because of the way their automatic withdrawals are set up. Do not wanna change the once a months, we got a lot of comments back that they do not wanna change it. So I'm okay with anything, you know, I just don't know how we're gonna come up with a consensus that's gonna make everybody happy.
Roger, Chris, I have her hand up.
So other times you have to work out of the, the bi-weekly part is a lot easier to swallow and adjust your pay, I mean, they.
Yeah, you probably could.
Yeah.
You budget a little bit, that's, I came from a bi-weekly to a monthly and it's a lot harder to go from bi-weekly to monthly to not. But it is much easier to budget and move your, your bills and your payments with bi-weekly, knowing that. So that would be my consensus, you're gonna move that, you're not certain yourself the money is, as well as going to the bi-weekly, that's just my thought.
But. But then do we double? But then do we double our payroll if we're doing it twice a month versus once a month? Like your, your process would?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that a big deal, Melissa, to do bi-weekly?
Well, then you get time clock software.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a joke.
I make payroll three times a month right now, yeah.
Doug? Yeah.
Please realize that secondary roads, twelve times a year does payroll. Bi-weekly means you're doing it twenty-six times a year.
Yeah.
It takes Lisa two days to do payroll. So.
And you guys aren't being prepaid, so for you, i- it's, you would have had to.
Correct. But I'm just wondering, if you go to bi-weekly, it means in secondary roads, twenty-six times a year instead of twelve.
Doug, if you went bi-weekly with everybody but the road department, can you do that? Cuz I can't see doing the road department.
Well, they have, uh, right now they're under union contracts, so.
I don't think anything in a union contract covers.
Says that, okay.
What pay periods are, and if you, I have a feeling that if the, if one part of county government goes to bi-weekly payroll. The secondary road department will ask for that as well.
So I get them all.
What would be more efficient, a few weeks and the other six months? And then, you know, whatever, you know, they, they'll go.
It's very difficult for secondary road departments to cooperate.
On the side, that six-month period to cover that.
The, the problem with that is if you're gonna get to that six-month period, you know, cuz you're going an additional three months, that's gonna happen on a holiday.
That's what we tried to avoid, so, so if we did it, we'd wanna make sure that we did it every time, but we didn't.
My point is you'd either do it now or you're gonna have to do it in March.
Well, now the.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, um, so, so for the employees who are concerned about three months, how much do you actually want? Like, six months, nine months?
Well, you stand it, then you're gonna run into Christmas.
Well, and, and we, yeah, we just, we just had that conversation.
You're looking at, you're looking at spring if you're gonna make.
Well, I, I said March.
It's now or next winter or spring, yeah.
Well, yeah, it, probably not.
You can't, yeah, but the holiday, you're gonna move back till spring, yes.
Yep.
What were you saying, Todd?
I just wondered how that works at the end of the year. So your, your last paycheck for the year would be?
Half and half.
They're prepaid.
No, I mean for July, cuz you can't, if you're not prepaid, you can't pay on the twentieth of June and.
Yeah, it'd be half. Yeah.
You got till June thirtieth, so then the July check would be?
Half and half.
Half and half, would be on the way to pay.
And that's what the jailers.
That's what the jailers, yeah, that's what they do now, yeah.
And I, I had, uh, someone, I know you sent out information to me, which was very helpful. But they, you know, if we could explain it a little more to them, I have, obviously did do a good job, but, um, if it could be explained to them a little more.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the reality is, I didn't, I didn't explain it to my staff very well either. Cuz I don't really know the reason why, other than it's, it's, we're getting paid for fifteen days and, and that isn't going to be recorded until the next pay schedule. But it's still going to be worked unless they, you know, retire or resign or whatever, so it's still gonna be worked. Um, you know, and I think looking at it from the standpoint of, of why, you know, I didn't have a good enough answer for that. Or I didn't really even know why myself. Uh, I understand, and I, they all understand, I think all the employees of the courthouse understand. Those fifteen days are, you know, prepaid because it's, we get paid in the month for the full month.
Hmm.
Um, but, uh, you know, it's, we heard it earlier in the previous conversation, you know, is it broke? If it's broke, then we probably should look and fix it, if it's not broke, why fix it? Um, so, you know, I think the concept of it's broken needs to be explained better. Because the concept is well understood by everybody, it's hard not to miss it, those fifteen days that we get paid this month. Will be for the fifteen days of the last part of the month, that's understood. Um, but, you know, maybe offer, or maybe, you know, I don't, I don't, I, you, you guys have control over that, that's how you wanna do that. But I think an explanation, uh, first to explain to them why. And then try to figure out a way, you know, to, to go forward from there to fix it if it's broken.
I don't think there's any.
If, if it's March of twenty twenty-four, then we should pick a date, time and set it and then people have that much time to, you know, set ten dollars, so.
Can, can you give me more time to talk to the payroll attorney so that we can get more information out to the employees? So maybe they understand it a little bit better and then, then we can set a date.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
And maybe revisit the bi-weekly as well?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for whatever you guys wanna do, um, but I, I don't know what else, how to revisit it. Um, you guys are gonna have to tell me how you wanna revisit that. Because I, when we did the survey, there is people that absolutely do not wanna change it, so I don't know.
When is the?
Well, maybe that might change, knowing the reason why you're changing and third paid to that and explaining it all at once. These are your options that people can understand it a little bit differently.
When is the next department head meeting?
It's always the first day of the month, so it would be July, it won't be July sixth, um, July thirteenth probably.
Okay.
Or we could have a special.
Oh, we could have a special one too, absolutely.
Okay. Um, I was gonna say, you know, eat up the rest of our, our, uh, board meeting here, discussing it or we can, you know. Have that discussion at the next department head meeting, um, you know, pushing out that timeframe and figuring out the schedule, you know, a little bit more in advance. That would give you time to talk with the, the payroll attorney, um, and for the employees to understand it a little bit better. Um, I think we should table this until after the next department head meeting.
Would, would we be able to do a special department head meeting after our board meeting next week? Would that give you enough time to have some conversations with him and then have everyone here for that, so we can keep moving on this?
Yeah, if, if the department heads are okay with that.
So your, your comment is that you're leaving it open to still do it in September, October and November?
The, my, in my opinion, we either need to do it in September or March, um, kinda with what you had said before. I don't wanna do it October, November, December holidays.
No, I don't either.
If we do it after Christmas. I'm not opposed to that, but I, I do feel we need to do it, it's just, I, I don't know. Um, but if there's more questions that people want answered, I'm not opposed to having a special department head meeting. And getting, getting more information, more options out there, but I don't wanna.
Do, do we need to make that into a motion to schedule that or is that just something that we just put on the agenda?
We can just put it on the agenda again if that's unanimous consent of the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that the ana, the unanimous consent?
To put it.
That's fine, I, I mean, I just saw people, you know, know it, I, it's, it needs to be changed because.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want me to?
Talking about it before, but it was the same thing, we didn't do it with adults.
You want me to schedule a department head meeting for after next week's board meeting?
Following.
And then put this back on the agenda for the following week?
The following, yeah.
Yeah.
You'll have to.
So it'd be two weeks.
Okay. Is, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
And I'll see, would it be helpful if I asked if our payroll attorney could be on the phone for that during that or not?
Probably, probably would be a good idea, see if he's available, please.
Okay.
Doug, you're up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Morning.
I'm sure you can take a quick break.
Go ahead, we'll, we'll, we're gonna take a minute break.
A minute?
Yep, you got a minute.
Right. I'll just stand up.
I guess while we're waiting, I got a question for you, um. The recycle bins here in Algonah by Algonah Publishing there, that's a transportation, or they take care of them?
The transfer station does, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so do you, do you do that in any other communities, do we do that in the community, county, just Algonah?
No. Well, those are intended to be for people in rural, outside of the city limits of Algonah.
Okay, oh, so those are there for people in the other?
People in Algonah are supposed to have curb site pickup, and I believe by ordinance, curb site pickup includes curb site recycling.
Um, and that's. Not many people do that, sure.
I don't like.
I guess I don't.
But that's, that is, it's been a problem for a long time.
Well, I guess, is there any, I know some counties will, will have one in a rural community. Like a state, for example, the grantation have one in, I mean, it would take forever to fill that thing out.
I think it's also important to realize that board supervisors, uh, do contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to.
We just.
The, to the transfer stations operating it. And that is intended to be the transportation of those rural recycling boxes.
Okay.
So any additional boxes, we would.
Need to budget.
Well, I mean, it's gonna cost them, cuz you're gonna have to. Well, I mean, it's gonna cost them, because you're gonna have to purchase things and you're gonna have to transport.
Yep. I just didn't know how that worked.
Right.
Yeah. Cause I've heard of transportation of of a rural community, you know, taking up the Lone Rock, it's gonna take a long time to fill that thing up compared to. Algonquin, but you don't, you never know.
I mean, bird. It's a mile and a half to the transfer station.
Right, right.
But they are a community within our service area as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Doug, we are up to construction in the right of way, and I see we had one in our folder?
Uh, yes, there are requests, actually, from three. Uh, we have, uh. Interstate power and light, I think, is that the first one, interstate power and light? Or is it?
Yes, interstate power and light.
Interstate power and light, they are requesting to, uh, remove an overhead electric service at. Two thousand six, two hundred fiftieth street, and replacing that with underground. I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
A motion by Wachter and a second by Carter, right? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.
And the second, uh, request is from Midland Power Cooperative. Um, they are requesting to bore underneath of Plum Creek Road. Uh, there is a new, uh, storage facility being constructed. Uh, called, it's a LLC Coyote Hill, so this would service the new. The new storage facility there, and I would, again, I would recommend this would be boring under, and then placing. Underground electric in our road right of way of P fifty four Plum Creek Road.
I would make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. We are up to Wright Tree Service.
Okay, uh, this would be. An application by Wright Tree Service to spray road right of way. Uh, this is in connection with, um, high voltage transmission line that was constructed a few years ago by. ITC Midwest. Uh, there's a couple of level B roads, and there's some trees that are actually growing. Underneath of the power line, and they'd like to spray the road right of way to, uh. Prevent the trees from, um, from growing there. There's two locations, both of them on a hundred ninetieth. Avenue, one is, uh. Right to the west of your house, Roger.
Yep.
Um, between three hundred sixtieth street, three hundred fiftieth street, and the other is between two hundred ninetieth street. And three hundred street. Um, I know there are some trees in those areas. Um, I would, any help in keeping the trees in the road right of way, and then obviously, from their transmission lines helps. So I would recommend that the board would approve of this.
I'm going to, to approve spraying of the trees on the road right of way?
I'll second.
I have a second, but Mr. Stecker, any discussion on any of this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried unanimous.
And this one, we asked for signature from the board chair, and if you would attest to that, please. Tammy, I'd appreciate it. Very good, thank you.
We are up to our time with the county engineer and zoning administrator.
Um. The bridge up in, uh, Lincoln Township, they are planning to place guard rail on that tomorrow. So that contract will be, the construction of that would be fulfilled today on the resurfacing projects. Uh, Peak Twenty, north of Highway eighteen, is, uh, the Golden Mill, Golden Place Recycling is. Uh, being completed. We also have a bridge south of Taitaka. We're having a pre-construction conference next week. On that, so I expect that construction will begin on that, uh, soon. Um, working on getting employees replaced. Um, do you have some equipment coming in? A trailer today, the trailer that we approved last week, and I think a couple of maintainers will be coming in soon as well. That's kind of everything that's going on with the road right now.
Satisfied with the trailer?
I haven't seen it yet. It's actually, it's on its way, if it's not here right now, so.
Any questions? The process getting mechanics, how's that going on?
Difficult. It's, mechanics are in demand. Winnebago County is looking for a camp right now. It's just, it's a difficult procedure.
Okay, you said you had some candidates apply?
We did, yes. We interviewed three. Um, so, I asked for some background checks, I haven't received any yet.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Doug. You got anything for the board?
That's all that I have, I guess. I don't know if the board has any questions for me.
Collins family says thank you, or, or Tom Collins, where it lives there.
Okay.
Both of my St. Joe.
For staking of the road right?
The road was, he was happy the road got created.
Okay.
It, you know, they poured gum, dump gravel on the road and had it laid again. He was, he was happy with it.
I heard some good comments about, uh, crack filling.
Yeah, the crack filling, slurry leveling.
Yep, they were appreciative of the.
I drove over, they went back then last Friday, I drove over a spot, and I wish they were still in. But that happens, we just gotta keep on, keep our maps for next year.
No.
Well, we can't have perfect roads. It'd, it'd ruin your reputation.
I, I can, I can produce some data, and I, sometimes we need to, uh. We need to toot our own horn, but Sioux County does have the smoothest roads in the state of Iowa. Uh, the rideability index. Our roads were rated at seventy-five, and the next smoothness was eighty, and it's rare to have under a hundred. I should give up information to the Board of Iowa Department of Transportation. Does that, but it was recently determined, so.
Well, we knew we were good, we just didn't know we were that good, Doug.
Well, we have, we have the best rating. Maybe the wind was blowing out of the right direction. We're doing a good job, I think. Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Can we go ahead and have discussion with the county auditor and do the?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, next week, we have a completion hearing for DD four. And as we just discussed, we'll have the department head meeting after a regular meeting. We also have approving the Sioux County Public Records. Policy and authorizing placement on the website. We have a proposed amendment, planning and zoning ordinance. Or discussion on the proposed amended planning and zoning ordinance for hazardous pipelines. A proven sign project hope proclamation, and then just our other, uh, regular issues.
Things we're gonna talk about the pipeline, are you gonna have some different setbacks in mind that you're gonna bring up, or?
That was something I'd like to discuss, I was, as for.
Yeah, so have something in.
Not just setbacks, but.
Yeah. Have something in mind before.
Yep, I, I do.
Everybody, I'm saying, everybody have something in mind. Cause otherwise, we'll just waste the discussion period.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get to this more when we get my turn for discussion, but these, uh, packets would be. The transcript from most of the first day of the seventh meeting, um, so, tried to. And document that, save that for everyone, so I'll get the second day printed out, but it's a heads up for everyone.
I read quite a bit of it online. Don't tell it put me to sleep.
Yeah.
But, I was gonna give it to Josh, he said he had trouble sleeping.
He's got one too.
Okay.
And then, um, as far as the bakery drinker public records request, everything's been sent to them except for the emails that Derek is. Working on, he's still working on gathering all of them, there's tons of thousands of records. Once he gets them all downloaded, then we'll try to go through them, make sure. That we're not sending anything that's confidential, and try to weed out ones that don't apply, so, um, but they have everything else, so.
Do they have them printed out, or?
No, the emails, no, we'll have to go on them electronically and try to go through them. I mean, we're looking at.
Okay, so they did okay us to send a portion, and then the emails?
Know that they okayed it, what happened was, um, on, when I sent them the records, I told them that the emails were not ready yet. Derek was not here Friday, so I told them we would get them to them as soon as we could get them. There wasn't anything I could do, because I didn't have them, and I wanted them to have. What I did have, so.
Okay, did they respond to that at all?
She said that was fine, so, it, it, it wasn't the attorney, it was just the secretary. I think I copied you. So.
I must, must laugh.
So, um, and then the next thing we have is, I know we had talked about using the current payroll attorney we have for HR and payroll. I did get an invoice from Renee Von Volker, and she's the one that we use for HR in the past and for union negotiations. The bill that I got is for March of twenty twenty-three to March of twenty twenty-four. Before I paid it, I wanted to make sure that you guys want to still have those two firms. I know we've talked about not having Renee do it, and just having. Um, Ayler's and Cooney do it, so I wanted to talk to you and find out, uh. If you wanna have two firms, or how you want me to handle this.
I haven't seen a use name to firms, why do you guys?
Different people doing the same.
Yeah, it's, it's duplication of services.
We've always had Renee, um, do our stuff before, and then we've been using Ayler's and Cooney a lot more with our payroll discussions.
Renee is probably not gonna be doing it for much longer.
No.
Probably need to be thinking about succession.
Wanna put it on the agenda for next week, make the decision?
I can do that.
And then we'll make an official decision on, is that all right for the rest of the board?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if we need to have a more in-depth conversation about HR as a whole, because. I believe some counties just use Ayler's and Cooney, like exclusively, but I mean, that's, they don't have an employee for HR or anything either. Um, and I believe from the numbers I heard, I don't, I don't wanna throw a number out and be wrong, but it's. Fairly cheap, um.
Who, Cooney?
Yeah.
Uh, well Renee's bill for the year is five thousand eight hundred dollars.
It's less than that, I believe. But I don't remember if that was per year, per month, but I know.
I, that's her bill for the year?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, so I, I don't wanna throw something out and miss quote.
We'll discuss it next week.
I'll put it on the agenda for next week, okay, and then that's all I have.
Okay, Jack, do you have any meaning?
Uh, no, not this. Remains.
Josh?
I had the third judicial district, Department of Correctional Services, um, it was a pretty interesting meeting. Uh, we were doing a lot of discussing about the realignment and, um, the state kinda taking over, you know. Um, spending control and, and things like that, and the transition to just being an advisory board. Versus being a board of directors, um, we did make an adjustment as to when we're gonna meet, um. Going forward, we will only be meeting two times a year versus four. Uh, there was, there's a bunch of different discussions on, so Clay and Dickinson County, um. Are spinning up their, their drug courts, uh, basically, it's, it's, uh. Keeping the, you know, uh, those that were charged with, with, you know, drug offenses. Out of the prison system and working with community members and stuff to give resources to those people to help them, you know. Um, move on and.
Start bringing in.
Make better choices. Yeah, I think the biggest impact that we've discussed was the, you know, the, the funds. You know, being moved to the state and, and the process that they're gonna have to take moving forward for procurement. Um, having to deal with, you know, purchasing, um, vehicles or. Or projects or anything like that, you know, that has to go through the state now versus, you know, being handled locally. Um, there's quite some mixed opinions on, on that, um.
Did anybody bring a point rule?
Uh, it was discussed. It was discussed, um, there was also a mention of disbanding the twenty eighty. But, uh, we didn't vote on that or anything, so, um, uh, I'm sure that that won't be the last time it gets brought up, but. As of right now, we're just kinda displeased with how things happened and, and.
I think, in general, they've been very displeased with the state, with the judicial district. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you're right on that, but it's not just them.
No.
There's, there's been a number of things with the state.
Yeah, yeah, it's, but it's, uh. It's a process that we're gonna be dealing with coming July first, when everything goes into effect.
Keep us informed.
Yep.
Mr. Stecker, do you have anything else to?
Yeah, uh, Tuesday night, we had EMS advisory council meeting, and I asked Phil if he could swing over for this in case there's any questions, but. Um, talked about, obviously, the transfer of assets agreement that we've discussed here was. A sizable piece of the conversation, um, talked about the policies and rate scale and. Different, um. Payroll options with the scheduling. So, Phil had done some work on all that, but, um. The big thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention here was discussion about the North Hub, and. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but Phil and I had attended the, I believe it's the last Sway City, city council meeting. And the discussion about the transfer of assets agreement was a two and a half hour conversation. Um, I would not categorize it as a good conversation. At the end of it, there was a general consensus to move forward with the concept of the agreement, but there was. There was very clearly hostility in the room, um, and it was. Not, not something I was acceptable with, so I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. I, I have serious concerns after that meeting, so. I don't, don't know if you have any questions for me, Phil, or anything about that, but.
Is it gonna affect how we're going to do ambulance service for the county?
I think it already is to some degree.
Um. You know, part of the, part of the tension up there is, is causing, is part of the reason why we're losing volunteers in the north part of the county. So, wi- without the volunteers, it's hard to hire enough staff to, to run that.
Well.
So we. We don't have a budget for that area.
So, hopefully, we can stop that, and, and, you know, get volunteers active again, but that's, that's gonna be an important part of that piece up there.
What seems to be the biggest issue, the funds, or is it just the, the structure?
I, I, I would. I, I, I would say the funds was discussed for majority of the time, but it was. Personality issues or differences would be how I would describe that, I guess.
I guess that's, I would agree is the best way to answer that.
How, how do we legislate personality issues is my.
Well, I guess my, my statement at that meeting um was. This won't work if we don't have a team atmosphere, if, if we can't have. A common agreement to work towards a positive goal for the whole county, this won't work, um. I, I don't know that there's any, any other way to describe it.
Back to transfer of assets, was there a? Yes, no, maybe, what they're, uh it can't work without the transfer of assets, so I'm.
No.
Guess I'm a little perplexed here.
So we, we did present um what we had, the draft that we had. We went through that in quite detail and did um.
Line by line.
Line by line, word by word, basically, um change hands to whores, whores to hands, um that's how detailed it got. We did go back to Todd, we did meet with Todd, um Jacob, Jayden from the city, um Kyle and myself, we did meet with Todd. We do have, we did have to come up with a new revised version from that meeting, um that, that version is out to both communities now. Um it is on Valbona's agenda for next Monday, plan to have it back here on Tuesday, um. I told Sway City to, you know, let me know when they scheduled the meeting to have their side, and I have not heard anything back on that yet. When that will be, so we're gonna continue to proceed with, with this, El West City Council and then bring it back here.
Uh I think one point on that, um currently the agreements are combined. With Sway City and Albona both listed in the same agreement. It, does anyone on the board have any issue with splitting that so that it's a specific agreement for each community?
Have, have you guys gone through the city Valbona on the agreement yet, where there are views on it, is it?
Yeah, we, we, we reviewed it, we've actually had it to a, a city Valbona workshop, I went through it at the workshop. Um I'm gonna say Jacob, city minister, has been involved with, with developing the, the agreement and he's part of the advisory council as well, so. I do not foresee any issues of that passing Monday night.
So the, the reception was a lot better with the city Valbona, um.
Very different.
Yeah, so I would think that it would probably be beneficial to keep the ball rolling to split them. Um if Sway City's gonna have, you know, issues with it, you know, we may have to deal with that on a separate basis. But to keep the ball rolling for the city Valbona, I think splitting.
For the whole ambulance system.
Right, right, I mean.
We, we have, we have to turn a key on seven two, so.
The, the issue we have is on these agreements, we're dealing with an advisory council, two city councils and board supervisors, so. By having this joint agreement, now, you know, hindsight, I wish we would've split it from the beginning. Because every time we change one word within the agreement, that has to go back through four boards, um. Our, our, and it's, you know, it is what, June sixth today, to come back through a whole set of boards again, you know, now it's July sixth, uh it just takes time.
I think the, the.
The switch is gonna happen July second, I, I'm not gonna guarantee you we're gonna be one hundred percent complete. Because there's gonna be things to clean up in July, there's probably gonna be things to clean up in August that we haven't thought of, but. Everything else is good, Board of Pharmacy's good, they're coming here Thursday, Thursday morning, both Board of Pharmacy be here, so. I'm confident we have everything done except this transfer of asset agreement and cleaning things up as we go above and beyond that.
Well, in my way of thinking, we can start on the second of July with what we have and we'll clean up. Whatever we need to do with Sway City after that, is that wrong opinion or?
No.
So let's just move forward and.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that and um. I think, I guess, splitting, in, in my opinion, splitting the agreements does not change any material aspect of it. It's.
Dealing with it on a one-on-one basis.
Two separate communities, but the language would all be the same except one name would be pulled out and it would be on its own, language duplicated. And vice versa, so I mean, it's fairly simple concept in my opinion.
Get it done, Phil, we don't have an option.
Well, yeah, so.
Anything else?
I have other stuff, but anything else for EMS? Okay, thanks, Phil.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um yeah, then I touched on it before with the FEMSA meeting in Des Moines last week, um.
A lot of people there.
Yeah, the printed out copies that y'all got is the transcript, most of the transcript from the first day. I have the transcript from the second day that I've not printed out yet, but I will plan on doing that yet today, so.
I was gonna say, I talked to this morning and no more.
Yeah, I think I printed that out a little bit.
No more new app, uh easements have been signed in Cassin County in the last week or two, it's just what they have, so. Just so you all know that we're still on the same number that we had before.
Twenty-three and forty-six.
Yep, that has not changed.
Is that percent or number?
Percent.
Percent.
Um yeah, twenty-three and forty, forty-seven.
Yeah, I talked to Luke this morning, had him check, so that we're, we're informed.
Yep, that's good.
Anything else, Mister Stecker, other than carbon?
No, there's, there's a lot with that and um.
We can discuss all that next week.
Yeah, I don't have all my notes put together real cleanly yet, but I do have some notes from that. And we can have a more in-depth conversation next week on that, so.
Good, we're gonna take a break until nine forty-five and then we'll start drainage.
Do we need, do we need that much for repair requests?
That will, nine fifty, alright.
That'll give us at least a thirteen minute break.
I said nine forty-five, we'll get here by nine fifty then.
Yeah, whatever.
Good, because the problem with drinking as much water is you have to use the restroom.
That's good.
I'm like gonna be a hard.
I hear ya.
Tyler, if you wanna get set up or what?
Okay.
We just got repair requests to do quick.
Morning Tyler.
Morning.
I didn't know where, where exactly anybody wants it.
Yeah, you're fine. You don't wear gloves, do you?
I used to. But, uh. Uh, we're going to ask seven to twelve. There's thirteen. Or will we have to fax them out?
No.
Marge, you got some repair requests?
I needed to.
Would you like to share them with us? Thank you.
There you go.
Just pass them all down to Josh.
I was just gonna get mine to him. You wanna start or you want me to?
Oh, I can start. I got one here on WK thirty-five eighty-nine. It's number fifty-six. It's a washout, hollid pipes, two locations. It's by Red Shootsure. And I got another one, number fifty-five. It's on one fourteen. It's a broken tile, needs repair.
Um, I got fifty-seven and Sway fifteen, broken tile for Robert Thompson. Anderson Tiling already repaired, I'm guessing, Marge?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's done. And number fifty-eight Ramsey, section six. To investigate lateral eleven tile per Jogo. She's email request. And it, in his email, says DD four lat eleven deals with restricted flow of a thirty-inch county main that transitions to a thirty-two inch county main that transitions to a sixteen-inch county main, which was not located at the outlet. Think that's in the folder for everyone to look at.
I wrote names on it.
This has been, um, looked at, I don't know how many times over the history and I think.
Don McGregor dug it up twice.
The maps are not necessarily clear in this area, but, um, we could send it to McClure Engineering to review the history and the maps and do stuff if you guys feel appropriate. I did have conversation with Dan and Jim Hudson about this. We discussed some stuff that way, but I know this is not the first time this has been brought up.
Well, every time we dig it up, it's dead flat or back green. It's not gonna change it unless you're gonna do an improvement.
Yeah, I, I guess from everything I know about it, there's not a thirty-two inch going to a sixteen. I don't know any contractor or anyone a hundred years ago that would've done that, so. Thoughts from the board?
This is your area and you know, you know more about it than we do, so.
Well, um, I guess I'll, I'll recommend sending it to McClure and having them get back to us.
I don't know either, including an engineer. You're just running up our goddamn call.
What do you expect us to do?
That tile isn't running, okay? We can check it out at the damn road ditch and we can start it on my property. I got a lot of acres tied back tile and it ain't running. And I got the legal right to find out why it isn't running. And if I have to, I'll get a court order to do it.
But you're probably good, Joe. But at the present time, I think you're right. Send it to McClure and get his opinion on what it is. That's our job is to take care of requests.
Yep.
We'll send it to McClure. Marge, you taking notes there?
Yeah, we can entertain a motion to approve the request if you're ready.
Second, Josh?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor for the supervisors to take care of their request. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Anything else on drainage? Is what we going to our hearing at ten o'clock?
Um, I guess I'll just make a comment. It did get fixed, uh, that there's CRB in Wesley eight, Viblynus family.
Yeah.
That has a ton of issues. Cody patched us, Cody Dornberg patched us together. I mean, it's, it's fine for now, but I think we need to look at down the road.
Is that Viblynus's grow?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one we chatted about.
I think we're gonna need to look at doing something more extensive to that section in the near future, otherwise the same issues are gonna happen.
You got any idea how far we'd have to go?
That's what I, I need to figure out from, from landlords, how, where you would, how far you can go with that, but something needs to be done there.
What is that? Is that a twelve-inch tile? Do you remember? Off the top of your head?
I don't remember.
Was thinking that it was a twelve-inch, that needs to be turned into a non-perf.
There's just, there's so many, and triggers are a big problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, this, I'm just making me aware that I think we need to look at that at some point in the future. Fix issues of long-term rather than.
Would you, uh?
Do you know the township and section?
It's Wesley.
Wesley eight, yeah.
DD ninety-one.
Yeah.
Who turned in a request re, here last time?
Well, there was one from last year, but did Blinnis turn it in or?
Yeah.
Okay, so I had calls from several folks that were hounded.
Why don't you grab ahold of a couple of them and have them sign a request?
My phone shows twelve-inch diameter.
That's what I thought.
Ten, ten to fifteen, so yeah, it's in that ballpark.
But why don't you grab a couple?
Mark, Mark Seaver.
Yeah.
Is one of those landlords there and all the, Sammy, your family farms next to that too.
We farm for a thousand.
Sains Farm by it, and so there's a number of.
See if you can't get a request out to do a major repair on it and put an unperp in there? And, and we'll have a separate request or?
Yep.
If you're looking at a, wrong thing, if you're looking at distance, I can find that quick. To go through the CRB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's shallow. But the only way you're gonna fix it is putting on perks through there.
Right. Just to the edge of CRB would be about twenty-four hundred feet.
Even from the whole length of CRB.
The whole, the whole length of the CRB. Rough, rough figures anyway.
Yeah.
Geez, what's an unperp now? I can't think of it off the top of my head. What is, what is an unperp for a twenty-four or twelve-inch pipe right now?
Wait, what it used to be, um.
I know.
It's, um.
Actually.
I, I would like.
Here.
Thirty-five maybe. I think if I'm, if I'm. I mean, that may be, that may be strong, but that's just off the top of.
I might be able to find some other.
Eighty-four thousand, so.
Ooh.
Yeah, so you better get some signature. It is ten o'clock, so we're gonna open up the hearing on annexation and a reclassification of hearing BD four lateral twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
I'll second.
You will all follow both, please?
Pla.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Raptor.
Yes.
Sucker.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Public hearing is open. We will turn it over.
All right.
Take it away.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Tyler County Professional Engineer, Paul McMake, here in town. Directed to investigate the annexation and reclassification of Drainage District number four, lateral twenty-eight after the completion of the project, the tile project that was done this last year. First, there was an annexation report that was filed at the same time as the reclassification report. This annexation report, that is the plat displayed here, was determining all the areas of benefit for the new, I say new, the, um, changed watershed of lateral twenty-eighth. Lateral twenty-eighth originally, still on this lower portion follows this alignment, but it used to continue on to an upper section of the watershed. There has since been a relief ditch that was cut in this location here and essentially bisected that facility's watershed. There was also brought up for consideration in the reclassification, a private main represented by the dashed lines there that has been taken into account in the reclassification. The annexation is simply to express all the lands that were determined to be receiving benefit. The reclassification assigns what those new benefits are. Any of the areas in pink are areas that were outside of the original classification schedule for this lateral. And anything that is just the aerial photo is what was originally or what was already on that assessment schedule. The area in pink that is being proposed is one hundred fifty point five-two acres of the breakdown tabulation here, which is included in the report. These areas, much like the reclassification, are based off of the watershed model that was derived from LiDAR. The LiDAR model is aerially obtained elevations, which are, it's light from a plane that shot to the ground, bounced back up. They record the amount of time that takes that gives relative elevations, which are displayed on this map. The advertised accuracy of which is one point every square meter. So approximately every three feet by three feet, there's a point, and then it's accurate to within six inches, plus or minus three inches on its elevation. So it's a very powerful tool when evaluating these watersheds. What the computer model does is it takes information, we give it the LiDAR, the facilities, anywhere water can, can pass, the culverts, field crossings, anything like that, and it evaluates every square meter with every square meter around it and so on and so forth, develops this watershed model. This model is the same one that is used for reclassification, which is why it's most economical to evaluate annexation at the time of reclassification. Any questions on the annexation?
Tyler, do you have paper copies of your report there?
I don't have paper copies of the report. I do have, uh, methods of parcel reclassification.
Okay.
To hand out for that. I could, I could get any interested parties' paper copies.
You're good. Keep going.
Okay. Sometimes in the digital age, people just like to, to see it up here, so. Yes, so that is the annexation report. The acres and the recommendation for annexation into the lateral twenty-eight watershed. You know when the flight was taken? Of the, for the LiDAR data, uh, this would be, admittedly, it's, uh, the, the new data that was flown in twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two is not yet available. This would be the, um, twenty-eleven. Not, not off the top of my head. I just know what, I could, I could look at all that. I could find that information. I don't have it with me right now. I know they were, they did it, uh, either, uh, there were some sections flown before and some after harvest. There are before planting and after harvest. It's, it was all of bare soil. This doesn't, uh, they, they didn't fly it when they were cropped because LiDAR does not handle vegetation well. It'll reflect back off of that. It's the same with, uh, large bodies of water. The light can't penetrate the, uh, a water surface, so it just comes up with one stable elevation. But as far as, uh, your, your black, your, your bare soils, uh, your roadways, everything like that, it is very powerful. It would, it would be al- almost impossible to go out and actually get physical survey of the whole, the whole area. We tie this in with physical survey, find it to be even more accurate than advertised, but the state puts the, the level of accuracy on it as a, as a precaution, so.
Any questions for Tyler?
I'm sure there will probably be more in, uh, reclassification, um, which, which is the next step of this. It's just, they are separate reports, so they're handled in separate.
Any, any comments from the acres that you brought in from the landowners?
I have not. Marge, was there any comments, any objections from anyone? I have not heard anything, no.
Okay. So are we ready to close the public hearing then?
Do we, um, do you want a separate hearing for that or?
Well, they, they should be, they should be separate.
Separate motions.
You wouldn't necessarily have to close this one, but I think you would have to open the reclassification hearing and everything can be motioned on.
Well, it means that we didn't have the reclassification in the original motion to go and close session.
No, well, it was a, I guess I thought it was a hearing for both.
Yeah, the motion was proposed.
Yeah.
Oh, it, it, the motion was for both, okay. Well, then I can just go right into the reclassification.
Into the reclassification.
Yep, awesome. I can hand these out to anybody interested. All right. That, there you are. These are, this is what I handed out there and I've got some here. Board is interested, we may have to go. Get the money.
Yeah, we can share.
Taken, sorry, I didn't, I didn't put. Many, many of those, um. The, uh, the second portion of this then is the reclassification of benefits for, again, Drainage District number four, lateral twenty-eight. again, Drayton District number four, lateral twenty-eight. The reclassification of benefits was, was a, a number of reasons. One was, this had been reclassified since the split between the upper and lower portions of the watershed. Two, the individual facilities of the district watershed were not on individual schedules. And three, there had since been the construction of a private main that landowners, obviously, and understandably so, wanted credited for with the construction of the new main as a district project. So those were three main factors that went into the review of district facilities and the facility benefits.
So when was it broken out?
That.
Do you remember?
I, I have that num, I know when, let me see, I, I may be able to get to the report in the sixties, if my, if my memory serves. That relief ditch has been there for a while, I could get the actual date, I have the actual date for that, just not.
When the relief ditch was constructed, it was reclassified at that time?
They, they split it into two pieces, the lower and the upper. It wasn't broken down into any, any further, like all of the la, the other laterals, sixty-two, sixty-three, the sub-laterals of sixty-three and sixty-four. It wasn't broken into that, but it was broken into two, two pieces. And as part of this reclassification, because we had not done any work on that upper portion, we did not spend any, any time or consider that as part of the reclassification. This was just for the lower section that had work performed on it. As part of the reclassification, there were schedules developed for the laterals listed here, twenty-eight, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-three A, sixty-three B, sixty-three C, and sixty-four. All of those schedules exist in the reclassification report. However, it is only lateral twenty-eight that is anticipated to have any levy run against it. The other ones are simply for future maintenance purposes, and they are examples of what a levy would look like on those facilities. As part of the reclassification, the commissioners' report, there are, the code sets out that there be an engineer appointed to it, as well as two disinterested landowners within the county. Myself as the engineer, along with Tim Strucker and Rich Rosenmeyer, were the commissioners for the reclassification. Our reclassifications are all data-driven, there's little room for subjection. However, as the code states, the report commissioners is the values that we have submitted to the board as trustees. The final say that of any of the values ultimately goes through the trustees after this hearing and having heard from landowners. The reclassification process uses LiDAR, which I've gone over with the annexation, it's the elevation data, it's displayed, reds being highs, blues being lows, the color gradient between them being that general relief. That creates a flow model, which are the blue lines here, as well as subcatchment areas, subwatersheds that all flow to their own individual flow path and originally, or, and eventually all the way out to the end of the district. This flow model is what we use for all of our lengths, for our proximity factor, which is how close you are to the facility, displayed here, reds being highs, being the closest to the facility, and greens being low, being further away from the facility, meaning you have to use other facilities more money to get to the facility. You don't benefit as immediately as those right with the facility right running through you. Like all of these factors, it's taken to a per parcel layer, this being the proximity factor per parcel. Proximity is actually the second of the factors, the first is area. How much, how much of a parcel is within the red watershed area? It's not just because you have some area in that your whole acres are considered, it's just those that are displayed here in color. So then second is the proximity. Third is the facility use factor, how much of the facility do you use? Again, displayed here, highs, hundred percent of the facility used in red, and the less of the facility you use, the closer to a green and eventually the dark green. Then you use very, very small amounts of that facility, taken to a per parcel layer. The second bit of data tied to LiDAR that is used is the soils, which is the USGS Soil Surveys Maps. For the soil class, characteristics, they are given a classification in the range of four groups, high, low, wet, and swamp. Swamp being the wettest, high being your driest soils, and the range between them going from getting a factor of twenty for your high dry soils, far less need for drainage than displayed as the darkest greens, to your lows, which are your fifties, your wet soils, which are seventy-fives, displayed in orange, and the swamp soils in red getting a factor of one hundred, or assuming that they are as saturated as a soil can be. This is also taken to a per parcel layer. All of these factors are taken to a per parcel layer because they are all at the end multiplied together. All the factors are taken times one another to get a unit of benefit, the mathematical amount that every parcel benefits from the facility. There is also a land use factor, or a runoff factor. This compares all subdivided pieces of land, roads, railroads, all of those to agricultural land. Agricultural land gets a factor of one. Anything that has sheds water faster gets a factor higher. The hard surface roads, for instance, get a one point six, meaning they shed water sixty percent faster than agricultural land. Because these are multiplied together, giving ag land a factor of one, does not change what their relative benefits to one another is. Also in this case, because there was a private main installed, there was a factor given for the, a tiling factor essentially, a reduction from the benefits of the facility based on the benefit received from the private main line. The areas in red here are the catchments that were deemed to be being immediately served by the private main tile, and they were given a factor of point three, which would equate to a seventy percent reduction from the main district facilities. This is common, this is a common value in our reclassifications of areas that have been served by private tile. In, it is a value based on permeability rates, rainfall amounts, and, and runoff rates. It's a calculation of in any given rainfall event, and, and it's rounded because it, it, it varies either side of this a little if you look at all the actual data, but it's the amount of water that would immediately soak in and be served by that main as opposed to the amount that would ever have the chance of running off and pooling in the lower areas where it would be picked up and served by the main tile. And so then that's where the seventy, seventy percent is immediate into the soils and picked up, served by the private main. Thirty percent of all total rainfalls are deemed to be runoff values. That is then given to a per parcel factor as well, all used to create the units of benefit, which is then used to create the classification. Classification is described as a percentage in the code. It's something I wish, it's, it's some antiquated language because it is in a percent, and that can freak people out when they see their percentages and they think that's their percentage to the total benefit. What this is, isn't that. What it is, is it's a percentage of the ratio of how a parcel benefits compared to the parcel that benefits the most. Classifications is everyone's units of benefit divided by the highest units of benefit multiplied by one hundred to get a percentage, which is then displayed as classification. So, for a parcel that, for instance, this one here, that has a classification of twelve point zero six percent, that doesn't mean it's benefiting twelve percent of the whole district facility, it benefits twelve percent as much as the parcel with the one hundred percent class, which is the one right here, which, from all of the factors, that's where we typically see the highest percent class is close to the facility, near the upper end of the facility, a full-sized tile, even though this one's, this one's longer as opposed to your traditional squared forty. That area is, is awfully wet from having reviewed the soils. So it, it all pretty well falls in line, plus then with those tiling factors, seventy percent reduction on top of that, that's where you see a lot of the, the greens show up in the maps near the, near the center. That process is then, we also, we give a class per acre. This now takes signs out of it, so you can see actually the, the parcel by acre, when acres aren't considered, the parcel that benefits the most is actually the parcel that is on the very upper end of that main, or, or the lateral twenty-eight facility. We provide a, an assessment based on a hundred thousand dollar project cost, and then an assessment per acre based on a hundred thousand dollars again. And then, the process repeats itself for every additional facility in that watershed. So this, for instance, is the lateral sixty-two proximity factor, so those that all run right along that lateral sixty-two, getting the highest proximity. The use as well. Wetness factor, all based off the original soils, the runoff. And then there was also a consideration for the tiling factor as well, because of how that main tile actually branches off at the, at the top, it, it forms a Y and is serving and helping relieve more than just the lateral twenty-eight. It's also all the other laterals that it parallels, this tiling factor was used and accounted for as well. So it isn't just the lateral twenty-eight. And so on and so forth throughout the rest of the facilities. Now we're displaying sixty-three. Then on to, I think we, we have multiples, well, now we're, now we're on to sixty-three A, and, and on and on, and the process is the, the same. Again, this information was, these maps, all of this information was gone over with the commissioners as well. They had the opportunity to, to vet it, review it, make sure that it was fair and equitable, and, and have done so, have, have signed and submitted our report. The last thing I'll say about the process is that in its capacity here, it is very repeatable, because it relies on LiDAR data and soils data. If all of this were, were wiped away, it, we could produce nearly identical results based on re-obtaining that information. So, that is very quickly going through the reclassification process. There any questions, Marge, have you received any information on this one as well? Other than that, I can open it up for.
Those are forty acre tracts in those, those pool ponds, you got squares in them?
Yeah, yes, that, that, those are, those are the parcels as they are displayed on the transfer wells. So they are, it's, it's forty acres or small.
What's the transfer was?
What's? It, it's, right, it, it's as they appear for tax purposes. It, it's as they're broken down by parcel number and, and if you do.
Do they give legal description?
Yes, yes, those are all, yeah, they're all, I, they're.
They're all, they're all in the report with.
Yes, yeah, and they're, they're all as they would appear on the county's GIS, that's, we get them, we get them from the county's GIS, so that's, that's where all that information is from.
And I noticed that there's some parcels that are less than forty acres, there'd be a legal description on that?
Yes.
And what does that legal description provide?
That would be.
Does that provide the boundary of the district?
It, it has, so in our report, there is the legal descriptions for all of those parcels. So yes, there are some that, that specify what the boundaries all are. The simplified quarter quarters just give their.
And, and it shows the benefited acres within those parcels?
Yes.
It's not necessarily the full parcel, but it's what's benefited within?
Yes, the, yeah, this has the benefited acres, the classification, the assessment, and then the ratio to total cost, because it's hard to derive anything from those classes. We provide a ratio of total cost, because that's independent of the whole classification system. That just tells you what your share in the district is.
So once you're done with that reclassification, that determines whether you're in or out of the district by that legal description.
There is no legal description of all.
There's no legal description for what the, what the waters, well, based on what the legal descriptions are and the benefited acres, that would determine what was in and, and out. Coupled, coupled with, we also provide these plats here that show what the watersheds are. So between those, those two bits of information, between the actual tabulation and this map here, you should be able to decode and decipher what is in and what's out of the district.
Do you have to use both? Which one's a little more accurate?
It's, it's helpful to use both, I would never just turn a blind eye to, to one of them. There's a reason we include both of them in the report, and that's because they're supposed to be used in tandem with one another.
So you should kind of use both, the classification, legal description, and them. To determine. I, I don't think we should.
I, I feel like, I feel like you're fishing for me to say something here.
I just want you to tell how we use this information.
That's, I'm not fishing for anything. I'm not, I'm not sure that, I've been, I've been waved off here, so that's.
There's a lawsuit in regards to those questions.
Right, so, yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, decline the answer.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess if I can say something, there's a ton of information you got through, obviously, but I don't think enough benefits given to the private main. You showed on there with your LiDAR that our farm is, is not the the wettest farm, you can see the lowest farm, I should say. And the largest farm in the area, so it needs to get near the most water. So that means our private main, which well, let's say, I'll be generous and say only ninety percent of our water goes through our private main. We're getting rid of that much more water for the rest of the district. And like it's pretty obvious how big of a benefit it is because when that project was thought of, yeah, I talked to all of the neighbors around, including the two neighbors who wanted this repaired done and they didn't want to be a part of it. And now after seeing how much water we can really take away with our own tile, now they want the benefit too, but they want us to pay for their benefit and their own. And I think it should really be considered taking ours down the farm because the the water we've taken off of the county facility is, I don't believe it's been shown enough. I I you showed very well, like you came up with your numbers, but if you're actually out there, you know, and see the wire, it's you saw it ten years ago versus now, it's the amount of water we've taken off the facility is without question, I think more benefit needs to be shown with that.
And that's that's where I get into that this is what what I've presented here and and submitted. It it falls in line with not only what I've been what I've been trained and taught, but it it falls in line with other reclassifications that we have submitted to to the county. Now that doesn't mean that uh ultimately it is the the trustees' decision on on what that share of the benefit looks like. Um however, to be consistent within my reporting and and our reporting. This is the this is the value that I and the commissioners at the time felt comfortable going with, just based on past precedent. I I'm sure it's making a a world of difference out there, uh I don't I don't doubt that at all. Um but when I when I look at everything that I that these have been based off of, this is this is the value that I have to go with.
No, I.
And it's and it's again, it's a it the report is a is a starting place. It can also be an ending place, but it doesn't have to be, that it's.
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't mean to say here, I didn't.
No, no, I didn't, I'm not.
I didn't mean to put the number, but I just.
No, I I I don't take I don't take any offense to to any of this, this is what these hearings are for, it's for a discussion. And uh let's let's talk it out, let's see where 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 things go, um so I don't.
Yeah, and I I'll I'll say one thing quick, um appreciate the comment obviously, but I think one of the points you made earlier Tyler was um in regards to other reclasses and stuff, and I know we've had people request to go to another district because their whole farm goes that way, et cetera. And there's been, I believe off the top of my head, there's been kind of seventy thirty splits because seventy percent would be subsurface going through their tile. Thirty percent could be surface runoff that could still go to the other district and um.
And that and that again, that those values are based off of um kind of uh experimental with um the permeability rates.
Yeah.
Rainfall amounts over certain size storms, depends on what what your soil types, there are. There there's a lot that's that's goes into what a boiled down seventy thirty split is um.
I I think the thing here is with the the way the land lays and the way the system was installed, when lower depth pumping station, um all those factors of this specific situation that I'm aware of, I think it's similar yet different in that capacity too.
Well, I'm gonna say in simple terms, so when you reduce it seventy percent, so you've got ten gallons of water. Three of our gallons are going in the old system, is that a very way to say?
As it, yes, as 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 a simplified.
Okay, well, you talk about surface runoff in our farm, probably the lowest one there, look at all the water we're taking from the neighbors, it's going in our new main. I mean, we're taking we're taking more water on from the neighbors than we're we than we're shedding off of them. And all the all the runoff comes to our farm and it sits lowest spot and maybe that half a gallon maybe that's.
Yeah, that's that's very.
You gotta you gotta do, but I just feel like we need to do some more, I guess that's why we came here.
He has a point.
Yeah, and that's.
I mean, I went when this all started, this event back in probably twelve, probably started in eleven. And I talked to Ody Johnson first, cause he farmed the farm where the tiles in, and he told me to talk to uh uh Warren, so I talked to her and I talked for probably three different occasions and she ended up showing nothing to it. Leonard Bauer got on board, he wanted to do it. Well, he wanted us to go through his farm, he had another farm there to the south of us. I went by a year and nothing was done, a whole year, and I thought, I'm just gonna do what I can do, so I talked to Walz. And that's why I went that way and I never went to talk to him, because nobody wanted to do it. So if everybody would have went with me then, we wouldn't be here today and done them for a whole lot less money and a lot less cost now.
Do you have in mind a a value that you feel is fair? I mean, the 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 technical protocol of this would be if, and even just now, uh on a scrap of paper and I can provide that. Um your your uh your uh vocal input is all good, but the the correct way to actually would be for a written objection of what you think the the value should be and all it all it really needs to say is that you feel your um tile reduction factor should be of a certain percentage, sign it, uh submit it, and then that would be something for the the trustees, the board is the trustees to consider.
Remind us now what his factor is, what we need to write.
It is a uh.
Seventy thirty, right?
Right, seventy, it's a it's a seventy percent reduction.
Seventy thirty, right?
Seventy percent.
Right.
Yeah. The the ground is benefiting thirty percent as much as uh it would if that line wasn't there.
Tyler, uh you have a question, otherwise I got a question.
The pumping station factor. His ground could not be drained without that pumping station, am I correct?
That that is right, to to gather the ground from those from that Y.
Right.
To get that to a point, it has to be pumped up and out.
So did you take that into consideration on your seventy thirty factor?
The seventy thirty would typically would would typically only account for gravity fed systems.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
So I is a pumping station, does that demand different criteria?
I I would I I I would concede that that does probably warrant a a bit of an additional um compensation of of reduction because it would reduce to an extent the amount of runoff.
That's where I'm that's where I'm at.
It would pond.
It it would change the dynamics of the system.
It, yes, yes.
That's where I'm coming from, so is was that fully taking vetted into the reduction?
Uh. I no, I I feel based on that, if there were uh a discussion about uh a further reduction that would that would be the most to warrant this.
So I I have a technical.
Uh what's that?
It's various and bold.
Oh, we it it that's all it had, I think.
I have a technical question, if there are any changes made to that factor, is that something that can be included in a motion here today or do you need to go revise your report?
Yes. The the how we've made these and this, okay, so that that's he is requesting a ninety percent. Uh what what I have seen done in the past on these is uh an acceptance subject to those changes. Uh I go click a few buttons, make the changes, uh re get the updated values to to Marge. And it would it would essentially go through the system like that. Um if you wanted to see what the actual values were, there needed to be a continuation.
Okay, but it could be subject to change.
But it could be if 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 what is decided on is if be if if everyone is okay with making, accepting subject to those changes, that can be done.
Okay.
Ninety percent seems a little strong, just just off the top of my head, but it it's.
Consider mechanically moving the water along this.
Yeah, um.
I wanna put a hundred there. See how fair it is.
I'm fine either one, but we can't make that decision right now in closed session.
We're not.
We're not in closed session.
Yeah, we're we're not in the we're in the we're in the public hearing.
Yeah.
We're in the public hearing.
To to.
I'm sorry, said the wrong word. We're in a public hearing, so we're not gonna make that decision in a public hearing.
Yeah, is 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 there any new or further comments besides what's already been said from the public or the board? Otherwise, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I can I get a comment from.
Did you have something?
Well, I just was asking, are you guys gonna make a decision today or are you gonna wait?
We can't do it while.
We can't do it in the in the here.
Oh, I see.
It's a technical, yes.
We can't make decisions while we're having the hearing.
Yep.
But I can ask you a question, would you be satisfied with less than ninety percent?
Say say that again?
He asked if you'd be satisfied with less than ninety percent of a reduction.
I'm just saying about ninety percent.
That's a, I mean, that's what they asked for, so obviously that's what they're looking for, um.
So you wanna close?
I I'd make a motion to close the hearings.
Do I have a second, Carter? Do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Flatter? Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Discussion on the public hearing, a DD four twenty eight, um we have a proposal in front of us.
Decision. For action, do you need something for the annexation first, need a separate motion for that?
That's, yes, I I believe so because the reclassification and the areas and everything are subject to the annexations approval.
Yes.
Yeah. I. Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the annexation report.
I'll second your motion. Any discussion on accepting the report? Do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Flatter? Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. To go from here, Tyler.
Hmm next, we're on the reclass and any potential changes.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We have a. Would you call one?
We have, we have the objection, which which requested ninety percent for that factor.
Objection.
I would make a motion to accept the reclassification report with modifications of eighty five percent for that factor. For the um private tile factor, would that be how to label that?
Yeah, yes, it it would be uh as opposed to the seventy percent, it would be to an eighty five percent as that motion was made.
I have a second to Mr. Stecker's motion.
I'll second.
Carter? Discussion. If this motion passes, do you wanna be on the agenda again to bring the report up to date?
If that if.
So we can accept it?
If you would if you would feel comfortable with that, uh else was caused, was it to accept subject to?
It was to accept subject to those.
Subject to that.
We could have we could have a review of the numbers and have it viewed that way, but this would be approving it.
Yeah, it says with modification.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be approving, but I'd like to see the numbers, I think it'd be.
Yeah, and I can uh even even just next week, I could come back in with updated reports and
Yeah.
and have printouts for everyone and and everything like that, that would that would be a nice way to see it through. It wouldn't be necessarily a a continuance of this, you know, the hearing's already been closed and everything, but
Yeah.
uh well, it's time to be planning to have these done and.
It'd be nice if we could see the report.
Yes.
As amended.
Yeah, so for for discussion's sake on this, with the individual circumstances of the situation, obviously, those have been talked through to some extent here today, but I think the the aspect of the pumping station and the other factors in considering, I think that kinda justifies splitting the difference between um seventy percent and a full reduction, there they still could have water coming into the district facility on very, very heavy rains potentially, so I don't think they should be completely removed, but I do feel it is a different situation. As would be handled on a case by case basis as we are here.
Any other comments?
What engine hearing report did you base your decision on, cause the way I look at it, it could just easily go ninety five percent. If you're basing your decision on anything, is it just a gut feeling?
I'm basing my decision on the information that was presented.
Yeah, he said seventy, that's your engine here, they want ninety, I think it should be hundred.
Well, I don't agree with your opinion.
Well, give ninety five there.
The hearing is closed.
Yeah, the hearing is closed, but um just.
We have a motion to decide that.
Yeah.
Final motion and a second on the floor, do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Josh, would you like me to repeat the motion or you want?
Yes, please.
Um, yeah, uh I'll let you repeat the motion, then I'll give them a short description, so go ahead.
Okay, okay, the motion is to accept the reclassification report with modification of eighty five percent for the private tile factor.
Reason for that is during our discussion, which you missed, we had a conversation about the fact that they have a pumping station. Um which changes the dynamic of the situation and was not a factor in the numbers that were presented. Is that fair, Tyler?
And the surface drain is very limited in.
They they are, they are pretty well the lowest
Right.
area in the district topography wise, so they're actually also taking water on from the neighbors as well as
Okay.
their own, um and that that's my motion in a little background, so it's up to you to vote, if you're ready.
Would you like to vote?
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Tyler?
That's it for me, thank you all.
Yep, bring amended report in.
I will, yeah, one week's time, I'll be back with the amendments as uh I make.
Yeah, I don't know, you need to be on the agenda or you just bring a report in and and get it to Marge.
No, no, I'm. Yeah, yeah, I can just I can swing in, let everybody know that it's done and uh.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you wanna pop in for public discussion, we could.
Yeah, yeah, that should that should be fine enough, right?
Yeah, that'll work.
All right, thank you.
Any discussion from?
Oh, thank you guys, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the good of Cassuth County? Hearing that, I have motion adjourned, Carter?
Motion adjourned.
I'll second.
Second best stacker? It is ten fifty about? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post.